Thank you for your patience. I've had some technical difficulties here. Hey Ray, I would like to thank all of you for coming to the night city council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order at six ten P M on February twentieth twenty twenty five. Even Madam Clerk, can I please have the roll call?
Councilmember Wilson?
Present.
Councilmember Hooton?
Here.
Councilmember Downey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sloten? Mayor Kramer?
Here.
Okay, now stand for the, stand for the pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Hooton, could you please leave this?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the republic, to the Constitution, to the Constitution of our own government, indivisible, with liberty and
If you please remain standing, I'd like to call up past mayor Russell Purdock and my mentor to give us the invocation.
If you'd like to join with me, please bow your head and do so. Our gracious Father in heaven, we come together to do the business of this city. We ask for your blessings to be with the city council and the mayor. That they may make good decisions that benefit the city to keep it safe, clean, and moving in the right direction. Father, we also ask for blessings on the staff that are doing the day-to-day hard work that will make this a better, brighter city to live in. We also ask for your eyes to be on those who are struggling, that their troubles may come to our awareness, and that we may be able to help them to have better prosperity, better life, and better comfort for especially our old and our youth. And we ask for these things. Give you the glory through your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Purdock. May be seated. Okay. For our meeting procedures, all items on the agenda will be open for public comments before final action is taken. Citizens wishing to introduce written material into the record at the public meeting on any item are requested to provide a copy of the written material to the administrative services director, city clerk, prior to the meeting date so that the material may be distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. Speakers must restrict comments to the item as it appears on the agenda and stay within a three-minute time limit. Mayor has a discretion of limiting the total discussion time for an item. If you're on the Zoom meeting, please note that only written comments will be taken via Zoom using the Q and A chat feature. Please enter your comment into the Q and A chat. Okay, moving on to adoption of the agenda. Begin. First item on the agenda, city manager floor, are there any modifications to the agenda?
We would just like to pull item number five from the consent agenda.
Item number five will be pulled from consent. And it'll be the first item after consent.
No, not, not pulling it from, pulling it from the agenda.
Good. Better yet. All right. Thank you then. Can I have a motion in a second to adopt the agenda as amended?
I move that we adopt the agenda with the exception of item number five of the consent agenda.
I second that.
Motion by Vice Mayor Sloten and a second by Councilmember Hooton. Downey. I, one of these days, I'm gonna get you right. I'm sorry, Downey. Hey Ray. We'll vote on our portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to presentations. The first presentation will be our February adoptable dogs, and I see him wagging his tail right outside the door. Worthday and Lieutenant Peterson will be presenting.
Athena is a very friendly girl, and she loves everybody she meets. She has made some friends while being at the shelter, and would do well with a male dog as a friend. She's very vocal and isn't afraid to tell you what's on her mind. Athena loves toys and enjoys her long walks with volunteers. This cuddle bug would love to be your new best friend. Athena is spayed, microchipped, and up to date on all vaccines. If you would like to meet her or any of our other dogs we have available, please come down to the shelter. We are open nine A M. to six P M. seven days a week, and we'll happily walk you through to see the dogs anytime after one P M. We have so many amazing dogs looking for a forever home, and we know they can't wait to meet you.
Thank you. Lieutenant?
Mr. Mayor, counsel. Today forty dogs have come into the shelter since January, twenty-seven have left, including twelve rescued, thirteen returned owner to adoptions. Currently, there's fifty-six large dogs and two puppies, which is a reduction from the sixteen puppies that we had, so.
And a little bit of a reduction in the adult dogs, too, and?
Uh, no, there, there was fifty-six adult dogs at that time.
There were sixty, okay. Well, good. I'm glad we, I guess the puppies went to Petaluma?
Yes, sir.
Are there any questions for Lieutenant Peterson? All right. Thank you so much for your report. Our second presentation will be the swearing-in of new and promoted police department employees. Chief Hobbs?
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. I want to thank everyone in the audience for being here tonight. We'll be swearing in a newly hired police officer and a recently promoted police sergeant. It's been a long road of hard work for both of them to get where they are today, and we're proud of the work they have both done so far in their, their journey as, and time as being a police officer and working to become a police officer. And we look forward to all the great things they're gonna do for the city and the department in the future. So if I could have Sergeant Eagle and Officer Serra someone, please? Before we do the swearing-in, I'm just gonna give a little brief information on each of them. Officer, Sergeant Eagle is from Clear Lake, California. He was raised here, went to Middletown for high school. He was hired as a police officer in January of twenty eighteen, so he's been with us for a little over seven years during his time as an officer. He's been an F T O, field training officer, a K nine handler, and he's done some advanced training for traffic collision investigations and helps out on the major injury or fatal traffic collisions we have. He was promoted to sergeant about halfway through January last month. Next, Officer Rivera, he's from Dinuba, California. He graduated the College of the Sequoias Police Academy last month. Near the end of the month, he started with us on the third of this month. And one of his goals that he has is, he plans to do as a police officer here is have a positive influence on people in the community, especially the youth, and be a protector of people in need. In his time off, he enjoys spending time with his wife, his family, doing stuff at the gym and playing video games. So with that, we will move on to the swearing-ins. I state your name, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States in the state of California?
In California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith.
To the Constitution of the United States? And the Constitution of the state of California? That I take this obligation freely? Without any mental reservation? Or purpose of evasion? Then I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to end.
Chief? Would you like a few moments for photo op now?
That'd be great. Yes, thank you.
Okay, well, recess for a few moments for families to take photos. Okay, we'll resume now. And our next presentation is also of the police department annual report, also by Chief Hobbs. Again?
So tonight, I'm gonna give a presentation of our annual report for twenty twenty-four. We'll cover basically most areas of the police department rather briefly, but get a, get a lot of topics in and give you a good oversight of what has happened during the last year. First off, I want to thank the council and the city manager and everyone we work with in the city for all their help in helping us to be successful. Without the help and support of the city manager and the council, it'd be a lot more difficult to get the work done that we do and also have a lot of the staffing we do. The council has done a lot for the police department and the city as a whole over the last several years, and with, with that help, we've been able to get a lot more staff hired and especially retain the staff that we So with that, we'll move forward into the the report. All right, first off, our mission is to enhance public safety by providing a professional, trustworthy service and partnership in the community. These three things, the professional, trustworthy, and the partnership, we try and work those into everything we're doing in the police department, all the different divisions, and kind of have those as our goals for things we do and the way we work with the community. Department structure, we have operations division, which consists of patrol, canine investigations, evidence and property, and then volunteers and policing. The support services division, code enforcement, training, professional standards, recruitment, the records and communication division, dispatch records, and then I T. related issues. For the first part, we're gonna go over some statistics. We'll go over general stats, crime stats, police response times, some evidence stats, some traffic collision related data, and then code enforcement statistics. That photo there, that's one of the dispatchers and the dispatch centers. You can see they got a lot of screens, different things they have to monitor, and their role is, is crucial in a lot of these things we're gonna go over later in the response times and the statistics. So some general stats, total incidents for the year up a little bit from last year, just over thirty-five thousand of those, just under twenty-one, or just under twenty-two thousand were calls for service. Just over thirteen thousand were officer-initiated incidents. Those could range from things like traffic stops, pedestrian checks, extra patrol checks, business checks, anything that basically they initiated on their own versus being sent to by the dispatcher. Reports completed down a little bit from last year, which is generally a good thing, down to just under thirty-two hundred arrests, down a little bit to just over eighteen hundred arrests, traffic citations up a little bit to just under seventeen hundred. So there's good increases there for the traffic citations. Crimes, so we take all kinds of crime reports. These are the type of crime reports that we report to the state, which reports to the F B I. Several years ago, crime statistics were called U C R stats in August of twenty-three. Most agencies in California switched over to Nibers reporting, which changed how the reporting was done. So there was no way to get an accurate depiction of what your statistics were after that time comparing them to before that because the system is totally changed. But now we have two complete years with Nibers, so we can, we can see how we're doing. Nibers, we report certain crimes. We have three categories, crimes against persons, crimes against property, and crimes against society. You can see there crimes against person, assault-type things, things that generally involve violence against another person. Not necessarily some of these categories, it includes minor, some minor things, basic assaults, batteries, they are included in this. And then we have crimes against property, all proper, property-related crimes, and then crimes against society. Generally crimes where there is no human being that is a victim, so common ones, weapons possession, products or goods possession, things like that. So crime statistics, crimes against persons from twenty three to twenty-four, we're down about one and a half percent. Property crime, we were down about twenty-one and a half percent. Crimes against society, down eighteen and a quarter percent, and then the overall crime rate from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four for all the crimes on this screen was right about fourteen and a half percent. Police response times. Priority one calls, we were down a little bit from twenty twenty-three, which is good. Lower the number on this is better. We're just over five minutes, eighteen seconds. Priority one is emergency calls that require an officer to go to immediately. Priority two, down about thirty seconds to eleven thirty-four. Priority three, down to where that one was up three seconds. So some notes on these, we report these numbers as from when the dispatcher gets the call at the dispatch center, so like nine-one-one calls, when those come in, they automatically transfer from the nine-one-one system to the dispatching program. It creates the thing, starts the clock. We count this time from the time the call comes in till the time the officer arrives. Not, not everybody calculates it that way. Some agencies calculate it from the time the officer is dispatched to the call to the time they get to the call. Those numbers were, were quite a bit lower for us. Priority one drops down to right four minutes for the emergency calls if you go from the time the officer is dispatched to when the officer gets to it. We generally report it this way, though, because it's more more accurate representation of how long it actually takes from the time we're notified that there's an emergency until someone shows at the scene. Some evidence in property room stats, items that we took into our possession, our officers took in that went to the evidence room to be stored, destroyed, kept, whatever it may be for that specific case, just at forty-three hundred items. Firearms seized that we seized on various cases was ninety. Prescription medication that we disposed of, that we either people dropped off with us or we got for various reasons was just at a hundred and, right at a hundred and twenty pounds, which is a significant amount. Traffic collision stats. Overall, last year, we had a hundred and forty-eight traffic collisions, which was down twenty percent from twenty twenty-three. Injury collisions were down a little bit from sixty-nine to sixty-four, seven percent. Fatal collisions were down from six to three at fifty percent. Definitely positive to see those numbers going down overall. In the traffic collisions, the the overall traffic collision number is pretty significant. The last time we had that few traffic collisions was in twenty sixteen, so definitely good to see that we have the numbers lowering there. The injury ones are, are pretty low overall, too, compared to them in that same time period. So we're, we're, we're doing pretty good this year. So hopefully next year they'll remain at this level or hopefully even get lower, be great. Code enforcement statistics, property cases, four hundred and fifty-three, down about twenty percent. Vegetation cases, down a little bit, also, and vehicle cases were down, not too many there, about two percent. Administrative citations is up about twelve percent. So some notes here on the code enforcement stats. Some of the things where, that caused us to be a little bit lower, we were short one code enforcement person about ten months of the year. They were moved to a different part of the police department. So we were short someone for about ten months. But another factor in here is, you'll see some of the case numbers are down, but the citations are up. So a lot of the cases that they were working this year are they're putting more time into, and they're taking longer to do. They're getting more citations on those cases. They're still, they're still busy almost all the time. But it's just kind of, they're doing a little more focused work on trying to solve and clean up some of these properties versus kind of just targeting places all across the city and not putting the time in, in work into them to have as big of an impact. Additionally, we're working on the, we'll have some abatement starting soon on the cow recycle grant, which everyone's heard about at the previous meetings. There was a significant amount of work getting prepared to do that in the grant initial phases of that, different things that have taken some time away. Ultimately, with the abatement of in that grant, it's gonna range around forty different properties being invaded. That's gonna have a, a lot more of a long-term effect. So while the cases are down, we're, our code enforcement is definitely they're putting more work into each case to try and clean things up and make it a better city. Accountability, we're gonna go over some quick things here, some use of force review, acts on performance, Q hit, I should change that to engage now, and then blue team. So use of force review, so documented contacts with people we had last year is the incident number roughly of thirty-five thousand one hundred and fifty-five. Throughout all those contacts, we had thirty-four reportable use of force incidents with people. You can see here on the graph there, they consisted in these two areas, taser and then physical force. So the taser one of those thirty-four were taser incidents, the rest are physical forces, and it's like control holds, takedowns, things like that. Not, the category above that you see would be personal body weapon. That Not, uh, the category above it you see would be personal body weapon. That would be an incident where an officer punches or kicks a person. There's, there's none of those. So all of our luckily, all of our use of force incidents throughout the year are very low level, which is really good. Percent we're at here is about point oh nine of one percent of our incidents have resulted in a use of force. So that is a really great number for us. Engage, uh, this is another, uh, software thing we use to, um, try and, uh, hear from people on what they think happened on the calls for service, um, dispatch, the officer. Um, these are randomly sent out to people on calls for service. So in twenty twenty four, um, the software sent out four thousand six hundred and fifty five of the surveys of those. Right around thirty five percent of the people responded, about sixteen hundred. Um, as you can see on those messages there, if you get one of these surveys, um, before the officer gets there, you're going to get a text message. Basically, it self tells you an officer has been assigned to take your reporter incident. Um, it's going to give you an approximate E T A of the officer to your location. Um, then sometime generally within an hour of the call being completed, you're going to get a text message asking on a scale of one to five, how would you rate the satisfaction of the person that handled the call, and then also for the officer that responded to the call. And then the people can comment, they give a score rating of one to five, and then they give a positive, negative, or mixed on a feedback rating. And then these, depending on what the ratings are, they get put in a queue for some administrator at the police department to review, contact the person or respond to the person. Um, of our surveys that year, uh, we got positive responses on just right about eighty six percent of them. Um, the number is actually higher. But we don't have necessarily time to change a lot of them. For some reason, we'll, we get a lot of people who they give ones on the scores, but in the feedback, uh, they select positive and in the comments, they write things like great work, we appreciate the stuff. Um, and they'll put in the notes that they give us a five. But they type one in the end screen, so that throws us off a little bit. We, well, the flagged ones that someone reviews, those we can, we can't change the score. We can basically check it so it doesn't count the one rating. Um, but we don't, we don't go through every single one unless it, there's certain criteria. They have to mention a certain thing, or depending on what the score is, or if it's multiple with the same officer, it knows the offer dispatcher, so we don't get flagged on every single one. So, um, the ones that we don't get flagged on, um, we, we don't go through every single one and discount that score. So it's, it's definitely above the eighty five percent, but, um, uh, it's definitely a useful tool. It gives a lot of good feedback. Um, and then there's things that that points out every once in a while that we can improve on. So we talk with the officer, we get in contact with the person. Um, and I explain what we've done, or you can see on someone, there's that blue response I have there. That, that person gave us low scores because they didn't like the response time. Um, but in that one, that was an actual response, um, we sent back to the person. Going off of the time we got the nine one one call and verifying stuff with the G P S location in their car, that was actually a two minute and fifty four second response. Um, so there's definitely some positive things where we can clear up some stuff with a, a community member who thought something negative, but ultimately it wasn't a negative. And then there's definitely the positive for being able to hear things and get information that we can help, um, to improve our services to the community that we wouldn't know about otherwise if we didn't have the system. So it's definitely very positive for us. Here's this sampling of things we'll, we'll send out every once in a while to some of the staff. Uh, many of the staff can sign up and get the, um, the comments that people give, um, to them if they want to look at them. Uh, this is a screenshot of the, like the login screen, the dashboard, this different comments, people. You can see on one of those, the person got, he got ten out of ten. It's a little high because five is the most. That must have been really good. Personnel, uh, we're going to go over next, uh, recruitment, uh, employees the year, and then service recognition. Recruitment, um, Lieutenant Peterson, he has this area up and, uh, fortunately and unfortunately, he has to spend a lot of time in this area. It is definitely difficult getting, um, people through the process. And so he, he spends a lot of time on this area. Uh, as you can see here for, uh, twenty twenty four. Um, police officer trainees, we had no applicants, no backgrounds. We hired two. Their applic- applications, backgrounds, everything was done in twenty twenty three and we hired him, I think the second of June last year. Uh, and the officer one, we had forty one applicants, uh, seven made it to background and three were hired. Two of those seven backgrounds were the, the police officer trainees from the category of dispatch. This is a really, uh, difficult one to recruit for, uh, one hundred fifteen applicants, three backgrounds, three were hired. Uh, code enforcement officer, seventeen applicants, two backgrounds, and one was hired. The dispatch one is, uh, definitely probably the, uh, most difficult one. There's always a lot of interest, but unfortunately, the majority of people do not show up at the test. We do, we do a test every one Saturday a month. Um, generally speaking, we'll have twenty five to thirty applicants um, in each testing process, and generally speaking, five to ten roughly, um, show up at the test. So that's not a too positive. Uh, we, we talk with them beforehand, confirm they'll come. Um, a lot of people, they did not show up. And then the even more difficult part is on the dispatch side, uh, the success rate of people passing the test is not very good. Um, so it's, uh, definitely a tough area for us. Employee of the year awards, um, this is for the year before, so we, we, we're always a year behind in doing these. So this was for twenty three, but we give the awards out in twenty four. Um, employee of the year for twenty three. On the left there is Officer Virgil Ellis, and on the right is Code Enforcement Officer Cristiano Anderson. Service recognition. Uh, during last year, uh, Sergeant Dominic Premiers hit twenty years. Um, code enforcement officer, um, Cristiano Anderson, she hit five years. And, uh, uh, code enforcement officer Miranda Logan hit five years. Miranda's worked in, um, several areas with the city. She initially started with us as a dispatcher, did that for several years, then went over to City Hall, worked there and, and late last year came back to the, uh, police department to work in. Good photo up there. He did approve of the photo also. Briefly hit on some training, just. Um, post-training, so this is training that, um, officers and dispatchers, most of their training is post-related, um, training. It stands for peace officer standards of training. It's a California agency that does stuff for police, um, regulations for hiring, all kinds of different things. Um, so mostly in that, or in that, it is police officers and dispatchers. Um, so a hundred and twenty four different courses for a total of three thousand seven hundred and ninety eight hours of training. Um, a lot of the training in there is mandated training that we're required to do. There's a lot of extra stuff we've done, but there's, uh, quite a bit, it is, uh, of that is mandated training, uh, non-post training. So that's generally good. Most of that is going to be code enforcement. Um, forty seven courses, four hundred and thirty. Uh, we're going to go over some community engagement, um, things we've done during the year real quick, uh, talk about some events, parades, uh, career days. Um, the photo on the top there, that was at National Night Out this year. Uh, we've been doing that for several years. Um, the last two years, we had really good success, huge turnout at the event in twenty three and in twenty four, um, both times. Um, and this one, it wasn't quite as big. Um, we did it a little bit later in the year, um, September versus August. Um, we still had a good turnout. We served food to over five hundred people at this one, this year or last year. So it's definitely a good event. And then we'll be doing that again this year, and hopefully we will have a good showing again. Uh, so real quick, we'll watch this, um, when we do the raffles. So at this event, we get a bunch of donations, different things. We gave away about fifteen bicycles. I guess other things, fishing poles, different things. Uh, one of the first raffle winners we did, um, I think he got a fishing pole. But that first one, they also got the choice to pick a department member that would go stand under the, um, the bucket there in the splash pad, the splash pad had recently opened. So, um, I came up with this idea, it didn't work out for me too well. Um, and, uh, that, you know, since it was new, everyone was enjoying using the thing that we figured we would get someone from the police department to participate. So the young gentleman that won the fishing pole in the raffle, he picked me, so says, what happened?
Smart little girl there.
Yeah. Yeah, so that was nice. The crowd liked it, um, and it was pretty hot out, so it wasn't, wasn't bad for me either. So some of the other events we, we attended during the year, um, fourth of July, Austin Park, the fire raising and lowering. Um, the Boyle's Fire reopening, I think we had a photo, we had a photo we passed in there somewhere. Um, but generally when we have fires, we like to do that, uh, when the area gets back open back up after the, um, evacuation orders lifted. Um, in this one at the Boyle's Fire, we went to the two main areas. So we had, uh, five or six people in their vehicles on Eighteenth Avenue and did the same thing on Fortyth Avenue, so we could kind of welcome people back that are coming back to their houses after they got back in. Um, or going to check their property and stuff like that. Um, the Christmas parade, the Clear Lake Cleanup Day, Go Kart Building, Heroes of Health and Safety Fair, um, the Lake County Fair, Lower Lake Days, National Night Out, P O A Christmas Toy Giveaway. Um, that one, the P O A, um, they buy toys and, uh, give them out to different families in the community. Uh, P O A Thanksgiving Dinner, do they do the same thing? They did roughly sixty families. They gave full Thanksgiving dinners to this year. Chop of the Cop, uh, trunk or treat, and the victim witness Christmas delivery, and then some other events we did at different schools. We did a career day at Burns Elementary School. We did the book readathon at Burns Elementary School. Uh, we went to the career day at the Clear Lake High School in Lakeport, uh, the career day at Kelseyville Elementary School, and then the career day at Lower Lake School. And that is it. So if anyone has any questions, I will be glad to answer.
Members, anybody have a question? Vice Mayor Slope.
I saw the fatalities, traffic and accidents from six to three, are they mostly on Highway fifty three?
Um, this, in twenty twenty four, I believe we had two. One, one, getting a finger there from Lieutenant Snyder, one on the highway. Um, in some of the years, we've had about half um, on the highway. Um, it, it's, it's hit or miss though. I mean, if you look back statistically over the last ten years, there is a large amount on the highway, but it, it's not the average. If you average that time out, it is less, it is less.
Okay, thank you. The other council members? Well, Chief, thank you so much. That was a great report. Um, you guys have been doing a great job this year. Statistics, uh, the crime, crime statistics are down. That's always good. I love to see the traffic, uh, stops up, and I see your, your cars all over the city parked under trees back where in the catch unsuspecting drivers like me. Fortunately, they haven't. No, anyway, thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to presentation to Tina Veramontes, our departing recreation and events coordinator too. We're going to be sorry to see you go. Director Swanson and Leba are going to run this one?
Yes, sir. One moment. All right, Tina Veramontes joined the city nearly ten years ago in twenty fifteen, beginning her public service career in code enforcement. She then partnered with me to establish the Administrative Services Department, serving as Deputy City Clerk. From the start, Tina demonstrated unwavering passion and dedication to Clear Lake. Leading the newly formed Recreation and Events Division, Tina truly embodied community spirit.
Tina pours her heart into everything she does, especially developing new programs and opportunities for Clear Lake's youth. She has a remarkable ability to unite people for a common cause, from youth programs like Junior Giants and Concerts in the Park to implementing improved city processes. Tina, we will miss you. You leave Clear Lake significantly better than you found it, and I hope that when you return, you'll see your legacy thriving.
Tina, I just want to say that I will definitely miss you. We've, uh, I asked you, had a lot of places where you've helped me through the years, and I'm especially going to miss your hugs.
Mr. Mayor. If I could make a brief comment too, um, really proud of the, uh, passion and, um, dedication that Tina brought to the city team. Um, we've always, at least since I've been here, I think we've, we've prided ourselves on really developing a team and all, in a family environment, and that's certainly been the case, uh, with Tina, with, um, her husband working here for a number of years as well, and, um, you know, her dragging her kids along to help volunteer at all the events and everything like that. But, um, Tina, one thing that, you know, I'll never forget is how irritatingly persistent you are. If there's something that you want and, uh, making sure you get in front of whoever's needed to, to try and get your way on that. But no, honestly, um, we appreciate it. I know that you know, part of your time here at the city has, um, been one of the most difficult times of your life and, uh, we're just, uh, you know, happy that we were here for you, um, working together, and we're going to miss you a lot. So thanks for everything.
All right. We will now move on to a public comment. Public comment is a time for any member of the public to address city council on any member, any matter, not on the agenda. That is within the subject commander jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act with limited exceptions does not allow council or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. Council cannot take action on non-agenda items. Concerns may be referred to staff or placed on a future agenda. Please note the comments from the public will, will also be taken on each agenda item. So if it's something that's on agenda item, don't, don't get up during public comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. And I have a speaker's request card here from Harvey Batmans. We'll start with you, Harvey. You still need to state your name and where you live.
Yes, Harvey Bateman. I live here in the city of Clear Lake on Thirty Sixth Avenue. And first of all, I want to congratulate the police department. They have really stepped up. I've noticed more enforcement in the avenues, and I greatly appreciate that greatly. And I want to welcome our new officer Rivera here and, but anyhow, uh, I'm here and stuff to, and I'm glad to see the city attorney here because I'm here to talk about the code enforcement. I had a great meeting with Lieutenant Peterson. He answered a lot of questions for me and a lot of concerns. But the biggest concern and stuff is, we need to find more funding. For the code enforcement. There's a lot to be done out there, I've been fighting. In my neighborhood for twenty-six years to get some of this property cleaned up, one of them next door, and get it cleaned up. People crush it back, and that is something that he's working on now. But I know he's very limited on funds, and. And what he can do, we need to try and get a little tougher on these people, especially the repeat ones. They just kind of laugh at it, go ahead and do it after it's cleaned up, do it again. And, you know, I have three places around me that I'm, that he's working on. And I've been working on it for, since I've been back up here twenty-six years. But it gets a little aggravating, and, you know, anything that the city attorney can do to help us. Get more aggressive on it, I know I would greatly appreciate it, my neighbors, neighborhood, not neighbors. Would greatly appreciate it, and I know Officer Peterson would greatly appreciate. More funds and help, but anyhow, that's basically it, and I want to welcome the new council members. Most of them know me and stuff, and it's about time you got some beauty up there. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bateman. Okay, uh, is there anyone in the, in the public that would like to speak? One up, Margaret. Oh. Mr. Overton. State your name and.
Joyce Overton, City of Clear Lake. I basically have a comment, because I just want to say thank you, Tina, for the last ten years of working with me and. Taking on some of the projects that I just no longer could do, the trunk or treat and everything, you know, I really appreciate, you know, our, our. Ability to work together and butting heads, of course, like Alan says, you're kind of stubborn, sometimes you want your way, you're gonna go. Which is great, because, you know, you've been a, a true mentor to our community, and, you know, I hope that uh, you continue helping. The new person when they come on to be as strong as you are, let her tell her, you know, or him, I'm not sure who's going yet. Um, but, you know, sometimes you have to butt heads, get things done, you know, and that's okay, so you did a great job, and we will miss you. But uh, you did a wonderful job of bringing that department in, and I'm so happy that. Our council, our past council, make sure that happens so that we can have these events and stuff, that you've done a wonderful job, and I wish you all the. World of happiness in your new endeavors, and, and, you know, hopefully you stay in touch with us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Mrs. Garcia, come on up. State your name and.
Margaret Garcia, I live in the city of Clear Lake, um, I first want to thank the police department for all their efforts and their hard work, and um. I really appreciate seeing them around and knowing they're there, um, as well as the uh, activities, um, I've seen a lot of. New things since I've been here, which is always good for the community, uh, the kids is a, is a good thing. Um, I had another comment regarding the roadwork, I, I probably didn't mention um, before, but I have noticed that there has been efforts. In filling big potholes, um, so I do appreciate that, I've noticed that there still has. Lot to be done in, in certain areas, and then I had one specific question, I know that we went over all the statistics, and I'm just curious if a. Cause of the Boyle's Fire has ever been determined?
We can't answer that.
Where can I get an answer for that?
Don't think there is one yet.
Are they determining it, or they?
I don't know.
Don't know, so I could follow up with somebody on that?
You could, I mean, the best place to follow up would be with the Fire Protection District, probably too, but um. Lieutenant Snyder will give you one information.
I, I guess there's no curiosity in that, or, or, don't, they usually determine the cause of fires?
We can't answer anymore of that.
Okay, well, thank you, that's. I'll, I'll talk with them, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Yeah. Okay. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak? Adam Clerk, is there anybody on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Hey, all items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature, and will be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the council requests otherwise, or if staff has requested. A change under adoption of the agenda, in which we. Nated one, um. Okay, so that'll be removed, any items so removed will be taken up following the motion to approve the consent agenda. City Manager Flora, are there any items removed from the consent agenda, item six, I guess, through eight?
No, no, nothing to remove, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Council members, or do you have any that you'd like to have pulled from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Uh, item six through eight.
I voted we approve the consent agenda, uh, which, uh, item five was deleted.
Okay, motion's been made by Vice Mayor Slooton.
I second it.
Okay, Council Member Wilson has seconded. Can we get a roll call on that? Uh, vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay. Okay, we will now move on to business. Item nine. Authorization of an amendment of contract with California Engineering for C D B G Stormwater Master Plan Budget. Uh, recommended action on that should be to amend on call contract with California Engineering. An amount of sixty thousand five seventy-four forty-seven. Uh, City Manager Flora, do you want to comment on it?
Uh, Director Laba will give the staff report on this item.
Thank you, Director Laba.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, the city solicited proposals for on-call engineering services to provide various engineering services. Each individual contract has a clause containing a not to exceed two hundred thousand dollar amount. The city currently has an on-call list of engineers for various engineering needs. The city previously had a separate on-call contract with a different consultant for the creation of the Stormwater Master Plan. Which has since been terminated for non-performance. Thus requiring a new consultant with experience in stormwater management. The scope of work required to complete this project will result in an inventory of the city's existing stormwater system. A determination of current capacity and capital improvement plan for improvement of the systems, along with a summary report and documentation. To provide incorporation into the Lake County G I S program. Any amount exceeding two hundred thousand is required to be authorized by a written amendment. In order to move forward with this contract, staff is requesting approval to authorize. The contract in the amount of sixty thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars and forty-seven cents.
Thank you, thank you, Director Laba, are there any questions from council?
Can I just add a couple of brief things, Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry?
Can I add a couple of brief things, Mr. Mayor?
You may, sir.
Yeah, so this is um. Community Development Block grant-funded um, project that we started, oh gosh, I'd hate to think how many years ago, and um. Unfortunately, as Director Laba mentioned, the, we did a um, request for proposals, and the. Uh, contractor that we selected did some of the work, and then essentially stopped performing, and so we spent a lot of time trying to. Get the project finished, a bunch of staff left, and the reason that we really. Um, are recommending the California Engineering Company get this work is because the main engineer that was working. Previous contractor on this project, um, is now employed by California Engineering Company. Um, and so, um, as one of our pre-selected on-call um, consultants, we believe this is the. The quickest and most economical way to get the project.
Thank you, City Manager Flora, are there any questions from council? Okay, public have any comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for action. Unless there's more deliberation to be done, I will. Yeah, please go ahead. Yeah, turn it on.
Okay, I move to the authorization of an amendment of contract with California Engineering for the C D B G. Stormwater Master Plan Project.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Downey.
I'll second it.
And it's been seconded by Councilmember Hooton, I got them both right. We uh, vote on our portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you. Director Swanson. Um, now we'll move on to item number ten. We will be receiving an update on the fire hazard mapping from the Office of the State Fire Marshal recommend, well. Recommended action to receive the update, uh, City Manager Flora. Stay with the report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members, um. We're gonna be talking about this a lot in the coming months, so. I, I gave some background in the staff report, but I'll give a little bit of an overview, um, again here verbally. So, um, there's a distinction between what CalFire considers state responsibility areas and local responsibility areas. Uh, the, everything within the city boundary is considered a local responsibility area, so over the years, there's been some iterations of. Um, CalFire, um, specifically, uh, Office of the State Fire Marshal. Within CalFire, doing a determination on fire hazard severity zones throughout the state, um. Last year, they completed um, updates to the state responsibility area mapping. That process, which didn't directly impact us, but um, the last maps that were done in twenty fifteen. Included an area of the city of about a thousand acres, most of the avenues. Um, that was recommended as very high fire hazard, a very high fire hazard zone. There were no um. Sort of restrictions associated with that recommended designation, and Clear Lake was one. Of about twelve, I think either twelve or thirteen, um, local responsibility areas in the state of California that had that mapping. Um. There's new state law now that um, is requiring local agencies to um. Get a little bit more engaged in this and actually adopt these um, recommended maps, so. We've been waiting for a while, it's been a delayed number of times, but um, we just recently received um, these maps from the State Fire Marshal's Office. They're considered, um, their recommendations, but all local agencies, including the city of Clear Lake, is going to be required by law to adopt these maps now. Um, you are allowed to make them, the zones more restrictive than they've recommended, but you're not allowed to make them less restrictive. Um, we have outlined here the process, we're gonna have to have a formal public hearing in front of the council about this. Um, that will come later, we have to do it within, I think it's a hundred and sixty days of the maps being released. Um, so we definitely have some time on that, but I thought it was important to get information out, there's going to be a lot of confusion. About this, there's gonna be a lot of folks in the community that blame you, um, or the city for, for doing this to them, um. Which, you know, we, we don't have a lot of option, um, one other thing that's gonna be challenged is, we don't really know. Um, what the impacts of this mapping are gonna be. Um, and I think maybe we'll talk about this a little bit more later, but I think. One of the questions you're gonna get a lot of is, how in the world did the State Fire Marshal come up with these maps and these different zones? And so, uh, on their website, they have a video, uh, it's about fifteen minutes, I think it's really worth watching now. Um, to give you some insight into this, and you may want to share it, uh, with folks that have questions about, about how this happened, so if it's okay. I'd like to cue that video up, we can go through that, and um, this, you know, no real action tonight, other than. You're gonna need to be educated about this, there's gonna be a lot of questions about it, and we need to get the word out on, on what's going on.
Go ahead.
Fire hazards started on statewide. This involves categorized areas in the state of moderate, high, or very high intensity regimes. Why? The mapping process will incorporate new science, local climate data, and improve fire assessment modeling and determining hazard rating. The aim is to mitigate wildfire damage by considering factors such as eroding, slope, fire weather, and wind. We will now watch the first video on the science and methods behind the map. We will now watch the first video on the science and methods behind the map. Hello, I'm Jamie. I'm a member of the CAL FIRE Model team that develops the Fire Hazards Severity Zone Map for California. The Risky Zone Maps are to describe relative wildland urban interface fire hazards over the long term for all zones, with various similar burn probabilities and fire behavior characteristics. Moderate, high, very. Point of view is fire hazards severity zones. North, central, heart, and town areas. And every dominated management. In these areas, we can apply well-established scientific methods to model fire behaviors, spread, and the potential fire behavior is combined with the likelihood of fire to get estimate of the hazard. Non-wildland areas include urban, agricultural, and barren lands, sand, water, or wetlands. In these areas, hazard arises due to embers coming in from adjacent wildlands to associate with fire spread through urban vegetation and structures. We estimate hazard in non-wildland based on the number of embers, where those embers are likely to land based on local wind patterns and the sloped tree cover within the area, which can increase the chance of fire ignition and spread. The first step in building Fire Hazards Severity Zone Maps is to define the zones. Areas of the map where fire hazards are very zones towards are determined and the classification is calculated. The zones aim to capture patches with similar fire behavior potential or fire environments. Fire hazards severity zone classes are ultimately applied across the fires. Data inputs for developing the zone boundaries include slope and vegetation. Areas that have similar slope and flammability are aggregated or grouped into zones. There is no maximum zone size. There is a minimum size of two hundred acres for continuous wildland and smaller for islands, wildlands, surrounded by urban and agricultural. The Fire Hazard Severity Model for Wildland Fire has two key elements. Probability of an area burning and expected fire behavior under extreme fuel and weather. The probability of an area burning is calculated using fire history for the years nineteen ninety-one to twenty-twenty. Knowing how much area burns in broadly similar areas of vegetation and climate allows us to calculate the annual likelihood of a fire occurring in that area. We then estimate the potential flame length if fire were to occur based on vegetation type, slope, and the local climate. Vegetation type and climate allow us to understand how much fuel may be present, how dry or available to burn. Because Fire Hazard Severity Zones are intended to measure the potential hazard across multiple decades, we use a long-term work at fuel development to not adjust our data inputs to account for recent fire and sore fuel management activity. We want to know what a fire could be like under the worst fuel conditions that may occur in the area. Similarly, for climate data, we use the worst five percent of fire weather observations that occurred on days when the weather is dry enough to carry fire. It allows us to capture areas that have infrequent but regular occurrences of hot, dry, and windy conditions and include that in our estimate of hazard. We then combine the probability of fire with potential flame length to get a final score for hazard in wildland areas. All the scores within a zone are average to get a final value for that zone, and the zones are summarized into final classes of moderate, high, or very high. First step in estimating hazard in non-wildland is to model ember transport out of the adjacent wildlands. Remember that non-wildlands include urban, agricultural, and barren lands, and water or wetlands, and that the hazard in these areas comes from adjacent wildlands. To model embers falling onto these lands, we must consider how many may be produced and where they are likely to land. Wildfire. The number of embers, also known as firebrands, produced in the wildland is a function of vegetation type, modeled flame length, and burn probability. We modeled the spurtle of embers into non-wildland areas under the worst possible fire weather conditions. When fires are more likely to challenge containment efforts. For example, if the worst fire weather in a given location tends to have winds predominantly out of the northeast at forty miles per hour, modeled firebrands go predominantly to the southwest and to a greater maximum distance than they would in a site with predominantly twenty mile per hour winds. We then add up all the embers coming into the non-wildland to get an estimate of the relative number or brand load landing in a given location. We build fire hazards severity zones in non-wildland areas by generating buffers off any adjacent wildland. The initial zone classification is the same as the adjacent wildland, with buffers of lower fire hazard severity zone classes modeled at further distances from the wildland boundary. In addition to brand load, we include slope and tree cover in generating fire hazard severity zone buffers, and these factors can promote greater fire ignition spread. The width of the fire hazard severity zone buffer is wider in areas that have higher brand load, deeper slope, and greater tree cover. Let's go through that sequence again, zooming in on a neighborhood at the wildland urban interface and focusing on how the cross surface is calculated to build the FHSB buffers. The black line in the image represents the boundary between wildland and non-wildland. The non-wildland area, shown in gray, will be zoned by buffer. The three input variables, brand load, slope, and tree cover, are used to calculate a class of groups, which is then used to determine the width of FHSB buffers. The first input is classified brand load, which has values of zero, one, two, or three, reflecting increasing amounts of modeled embers or firebrands impacting an area. As mentioned before, the brand load is a function of vegetation type and burn probability in the adjacent wildland and the wind patterns in the area. More embers landing on a grid cell will result in a lower value of the cross surface than the wider buffers of FHSB. The second input is classified slope, which has a value of one for areas of slope less than twenty percent and a value of two for areas of slope greater than twenty percent. Deeper slopes result in a lower value of the cross surface in that area and wider buffers of FHSB. The final input is classified tree cover, which has values of one, two, or three, reflecting increasing tree cover. Greater tree cover results in a lower cross group's value and wider buffers of FHSB. To calculate the cross group, the class values for brand load, slope, and tree cover are added together for each grid cell. The value ranges from two to nine. Higher numbers reflect the greater potential for fire ignition spread. We then take the embers of that zone and scale the values of the cross group's ranges from ten to forty. Higher cross implies lower. The cross group, reflecting each grid cell's value of brand load, slope, and tree cover, then is a buffer of FHSB buffers. We along the line in the wildland area. Values sequential grid cells stands together until total. FHSB buffers adjacent to the wildland is the same as the FHSB class in the adjacent wildland. As cross surface values are added up, ember transitions to lower FHSB. In non-wildland areas, there's far from paths as well. That's contrast wildland areas, which always save the zone. The model process for Fire Hazards Severity Zones across all states. Once you have a final Fire Hazards Severity Zone map for all, the final step in that development is to extract state responsibility areas to fulfill the requirements of the regulatory process. If you have further questions on the zoning methods, please visit the Fire Hazards Severity Zone website for more information on the model and process.
I'm sure you're all very clear on how that calculation works by now, but it is interesting to know that the example that they showed, the aerial photograph, had almost no trees in it, and it all still ended up as very high fire hazard zone, so. One thing we pretty much know for sure is that there's going to be a lot of insurance impacts. One, the governor has issued an executive order around very high fire hazard zones are going to be required to implement what they call Zone Zero, which is basically no combustible materials within five feet of a home, whether it's trees, grass, shrubs, a fence, mulch, a deck. So there's going to be some pretty, pretty significant impacts. That's basically the baseline we expect. You know, as the state likes to do, there's going to be a number of additional regulations that come down. They're going to tell us that we have to enforce them. They're not going to do it for us, so it is going to require, you know, a lot of work from us and coordination with other agencies, including our Fire Protection District, hopefully, on some of it. So with that, that's kind of the overview. I'll try to address any questions.
Anybody have a question? The manager Flora? On all of that very clear information that we just got? I think Woodland College actually just went through that process with removing things from, well, trees from five, within five feet and no overhanging.
That was part of it. I mean, one thing that is a little frustrating that people expect that college is a good example. They did an enormous amount of work removing vegetation. And you would expect that maybe you would get some credit or benefit from this mapping process as a result of that mitigation, or it's not, not going to happen.
No, no credit on. Okay, no more questions for council. Open up the public for any comments. Mrs. Garcia, come on up. Turn the, turn the mic on. That's on, you had it on. There you go.
I missed most of that presentation, even when I was sitting in the room. But I'm not sure why that was so low and not able to hear, but I'm just curious, because I did think you said something about you can't have a deck within five feet of your property? Is that, is that one of the parameters? Did I heard you say?
Would you like me to go ahead and address that?
Yeah.
That is, no combustible materials within five feet of a residence within the very high fire hazard zone.
Including a deck around your house?
Yes.
Wow, okay.
Or a wooden fence that's up against your house.
And is this kind of per governor?
Section of fence within five feet of non-combustible material.
Like a deck track, the, the, I mean, how do you have a deck? Listen, I guess it's made out of plastic or something.
I think you got what we know.
I appreciate that, Mayor. I really appreciate your input. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public? Vice Mayor, so you had something? Yeah, but we have like public meetings on this or in a workshop or some kind of thing where people can actually understand it a little bit more? I mean, there's very few people in the room here, and I wonder if some workshop might be a way to spread the word a little bit more.
Yes, so we're required to have a public hearing, which we will do. This was just another opportunity to get, try to get the word out a little bit so people are paying attention. You know, it's not uncommon for there to be this type of reaction, and I think unfortunately, the community probably is not going to respond or care about this as much as they should until they get a cancellation notice on their insurance, which if they do nothing is going to happen. So I mean, if, you know, if the council wants to do other workshops or whatever, we can. I would just caution, I mean, you know, I think, I'm afraid that one thing we have to balance is the more we take this on, the more anger is going to be directed at the city about this, where we have basically no control other than we're being told you have to implement it. So just keep that in mind as well, but we definitely need to try to get the word out as much as we can so people are aware of the consequences here.
Okay. Director Swanson? Is there anything on the Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
All right, then we'll bring it back. I guess we don't require any action here unless we have a consensus, want you to do something. I think there's any consensus, so. We'll move on. To item eleven, hearing to consider resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh seven, a resolution of the City Council, the City of Clearlake, resolution of necessity to acquire certain real property by eminent domain in finding an acquisition exempt from California Environmental Quality Act twelve one oh five San Joaquin Avenue in Clearlake, California, APN oh three seven one seven one one hundred. With the recommended action is to conduct a hearing on the resolution and adopt resolution twenty twenty-five oh seven, we agree. City Council or Council Manager, City Manager Flora?
Yeah, City Attorney Pucci is going to give an overview, kind of a legal process here, and then we'll have a presentation from Public Works staff about.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. As you indicated, you are here sitting as a hearing body on a hearing to consider a resolution of necessity. This is a procedurally required step in the eminent domain process. The order of the proceedings tonight, recommended order of proceedings will be, you will get a staff presentation, questions then from the council to staff, then we'll then move to a property owner presentation if the property owners wanted to speak and questions of the property owners. We will then take public comment. Given that this is a unique hearing, I will remind the public and advise and request the council will not respond to any back and forth questioning or will not respond to any questions posed by the general members of the public. And then we'll bring it back to the council for further action. For the record, and for, just to comment, we received this evening at four thirty-seven PM a letter from the Property Owners Council. There were, the correspondence essentially had three primary requests in there. There were some ancillary requests, but the primary ones were for one, a continuance of tonight's hearing. Staff has reviewed that request and strongly recommends that there are no reasonable grounds stated in the letter to grant that request for a continuance. The second request was to make this letter that I'm referencing now part of the record. That request was granted. As I indicated, we received at four thirty-seven, the correspondence at four forty-seven, it was sent to the council. The council was already, it was also given hard copies prior to this hearing, and those, this correspondence has also been made a part of the city record on the website for general public consumption. The third request was for an opportunity for the property owners to speak, and as I already indicated, that was granted, and of course, we will afford that opportunity. The last point I have is just a technical point that I'll point out or that I'll ask from staff, which is the title of exhibit B still needs a name change from easement to fee. If Public Works can make a note of that and coordinate that change with the city engineer. With that, I have nothing further.
Thank you. Mr. Pucci? Are we? Who are we giving the presentation?
Yeah, our construction manager Hayes is going to give.
Good evening, council. Tonight I will be giving an overview of the Goose Neck Landslide Repair Project and the necessity of eminent domain. The Goose Neck Landslide Emergency Project required work. Required work consisting of removing landslide debris, installing two soil now walls to permanently stabilize the landslide areas, installing new guardrail on Lake Shore Drive, hydroseeding disturbed soil, and restoring the area to as close to their original condition as possible. The emergency project was necessary because a major storm event in February of twenty twenty-four caused two landslides that threatened the integrity of Lake Shore Drive. Lake Shore Drive is one of the main routes for thousands of residents who, if this area of roadway failed, would have to take a detour to North Drive and Silver Bank Road to get to their homes. A large portion of the landslide was in the city right of way, but it was impossible to repair only the area of the landslide in the city right of way and not encroach onto private property. If only the city right of way portion of the landslide were to be repaired, it would have failed because the area of the landslide on private property would have still been unstable. As a necessary part of the stabilization of the landslide, encroaching onto private property was needed to construct the permanent retaining structures, the soil now walls. It is also necessary to acquire the private property so that the city can maintain this area and the permanent retaining structure to prevent further landslide events to the extent feasible. Additionally, under the requirements of Caltrans and the Federal Highway Administration, because the city installed a permanent structure on private property, the city must acquire the area that is outside the city right of way. The city is looking to acquire approximately seven hundred and ninety square feet of the parcel located at one two one oh five San Joaquin Extension, and the project or the city has already acquired approximately two thousand six hundred and ninety-five square feet from the parcel adjacent to it located at one two one one five San Joaquin Avenue. So a picture's worth a thousand words. This is an approximate. So a picture's worth a thousand words. This is an approximate diagram of the two properties in the city right of way of the project. As you can see, the red area is approximately where the city right of way is. The blue area is the Hewlett property, which we are looking to acquire. And the green property is the Cooper property, which we already acquired and got through Esther with. As you can see, the area of the Hewlett property, the city is looking to acquire is only part of the soil nail wall that was installed. I also wanted to mention that last week, the Hewlett's requested staking on their property. Of the area that the city is looking to acquire. That was done by a licensed surveyor on the eighteenth this week. And there seemed to be some misunderstanding about what was staked based on the letter we received tonight from the Hewlett's attorney. So I'd like to explain the staking a little bit. What was state was the property line between the Hewlett's and the Cooper's so that. Diagonal line kind of through the center there that goes down to the bottom. Sorry, I lost my place. So that was staked from the soil nail wall down to the lake to help establish what that angle of the property line was. We then staked a couple of points at the bottom of the wall with an offset written on the stake. To show where the city right of way line. So I think there was a few at the bottom there in the, of the blue. That showed offsets of, I think one was like 30 feet, one was 14 feet, et cetera. And if you went from the stake. To the right of way line, you would find that point. And lastly, we staked a northern point where the Hewlett property touches the city right of way where their detached garage is.
Miss Say, just a clarifying question. So confirming that the diagonal line that's both red and green that goes down to the lake front is not the staking area. Was not the identified area as to what's at issue here. What is issue here is simply marked in the green shadow.
What issue here is the blue.
Blue, sorry, I meant blue.
Yes, but that is correct.
Thank you.
Lastly, I'd like to present to council photos from the Goose Neck landslide project showing the before, during, and after of construction. As well as the process used to construct the soil nail walls. So a lot of this stuff is drone photos that were taken by the contractor. And this is when the landslide happened. You can kind of see the two tarped areas. That we protected while the walls are being designed. This is the Hewlett property from down below before we started doing any work. You can see that the retaining wall in the middle is failing and sliding right there as well. This was excavating the landslide material. And a drone photo from above of that process. This is after all the material was excavated out of there and they built a bench for the drill rig to sit on for the soil nails. This is the actual soil nails being installed. And that's what the wall looks like with just all the soil nails installed. And then what they do is they install the chimney drains, which are those black pieces, a welded wire mesh and rebar. Then they hit it with shotcrete. Next, they add additional rebar, no welded wire mesh this time and do a second layer of shotcrete. And that is what the wall looks like. And you can see the Cooper wall still being built in the corner too. There's another drone photo. And that is the finished product. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have, anybody have any questions? Anybody? No questions? Okay. I will now give Mr. and Mrs. Hewlett, would you like to come up and speak?
Hi, my name is Bailey Hewlett.
And my name is Andy Hewlett, and we own the property at 12105 San Joaquin.
I have a letter regarding the property and the case of eminent domain from our attorney. I am going to read it. We do not question the necessity of the project itself. However, as discussed below, we question the need for taking our property for the project. We also question the extent of the taking. We respectfully request that this matter be removed from any final determination at tonight's meeting because it is premature. The city has failed to adequately identify the boundaries of the proposed taking. And it has failed to identify the need for the extent of the taking that has been indicated. The city has not yet provided us with a plot map showing the relationship between the area proposed to be taken. And the current and previously approved, approved improvements on our property. Including our home itself, surrounding decks and our garage. While we appreciate that stakes were recently placed by the city. These stakes do not clearly identify the boundary lines of the taking and there has not been any opportunity for us to obtain clarification. The information that we have received, including the drawings and stakes placed, raised more questions that need to be answered before a proper hearing can take place. We would like additional time to get a full evaluation by walking the property with a representative from the city. To help identify what is being taken and what boundaries, structures, and improvements on our property will be affected. We object to any determination that the taking associated with the project as presently configured is necessary. In the event the council decides to proceed with the public hearing for consideration of a resolution of necessity. To acquire proportions of the subject property, we object to such a finding on several grounds. One, the proposed taking is. Planned and located in a manner that is not compatible with the greatest public good and least private injury. We respectfully disagree that the project currently proposed is being planned and located in a manner that is most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. As required under California Code of Civil Procedure Section 1240 dot zero three zero B. While we do not disagree that the project is itself is pursuant to the public interest. We do object to the amount of our property proposed to be taken for the project. The boundaries remain somewhat uncertain. Additionally, we do not agree that any of the subject property needs to be taken to accomplish the project. The boundaries of the taking as indicated to date, though still not well understood, appear to indicate that the taking currently proposed would cause us to lose portions. Of our property that are. The site of standing structures, one stake plate, one of the stakes placed in connection with the proposed taking appears to indicate. That a boundary line will immediately adjacent our home. If these stakes are accurate, we will be pre cleared, pre cleared to proceedings with previously approved. Structures and improvements and will be impaired. In our ability to add and improve on the entire property. And hinder the quiet enjoyment of our home. We see no reason why the public good requires taking of these portions of our property. Two, the property sought to be acquired is unnecessary for the project. We respectfully contest that the area sought to be taken is necessary for the project within the meaning of. Code of Civil Procedure 1240 dot zero three zero C. As stated above, we believe that the project can be completed without taking any or all of the portions of the subject property proposed. For the foregoing reasons, among others, we respectfully submit that the city should not consider adoption of the proposed resolution of necessity. In the event that the public hearing proceeds tonight, we respectfully request that the city council deny the resolution of necessity. We do not agree with the proposition that the taking as currently configured is necessary for the project.
Thank you for your comments. Any questions? Thank you. Hey, are there any other public comments on this item? Madam Clerk, are there any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to council for deliberation and action.
I'll speak.
Counsel. Woman.
I'm gonna speak. I have a lot of questions, but I feel like more information needs to be probably discussed. With the council, maybe city manager and city attorney, so. I, as a homeowner myself, I get the whole needing additional time. And be in this situation, I totally understand from a city's perspective. And the safety of our people. I get why we're trying to get eminent domain on this. So if. I were to proceed with this tonight, my vote would be no, just to get the Hewlett's more time in consideration. And that's all I'm gonna say. And that's my reasoning for my vote.
Thank you, Council. Member Downey. Anyone else have any comments?
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Mayor. I left out what kind of one critical detail that I should have in my introductory comments. This matter by law does require a super majority vote, so a four fifths vote of the council to pass.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Sloten. I think there should be some more. Communication between the property owners and the surveyor apparently. Because there seems to be some misunderstanding of what's been out there, but at the same time. The city is, needs to, it's not the city that is requiring to take this property, it's the state that's required. It's not us. And I can understand the reason for it. If, if we don't. Get this piece of property, I mean, we might be out of. Some significant amount of money on basically the cost of the repair. So I want to move to approve resolution number 2025 dash oh seven, a resolution of the City Council, the City of Clear Lake. Resolution of necessity to acquire certain real property by eminent domain. And finding the acquisition exempt from the California Environmental Control Act. And the property is located at 12105 San Joaquin Avenue. Clear Lake, California, assesses parcel number zero three seven dash one seven one dash one hundred.
Motion has been made by Vice Mayor Sloten. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second has been made by Councilmember Putin.
Mr. Mayor, could I, can I make a brief comment before you move forward? You know, from staff perspective, we still recommend moving forward as, as recommended. You know, we have had. Correspondence over the year of this project with the property owners, including apps and so forth. I mean, we're still happy to do additional communication with them and help them understand. The area, but still recommend moving forward with, with the legal process at this point.
So if I understand you correctly, that somebody will. Go out and walk the property as they're asking, is that one of the things you're suggesting?
I certainly can't answer for staff. We, we, from a legal perspective, I will help. If that's his, the direction or if that's the desire of staff, which I don't think that staff has any reason not to clearly let the Hewlett's know. Where this, where the boundaries are on this. However, I will note that conversations are. Have to be guarded here a little bit and we have to be careful with the scenario because there is active litigation. Between the Hewlett's and the city, so it adds another dynamic to the ability to simply send city staff out to have casual conversations. But we can certainly do it and, and I'll consult with, with staff on, on how to do that if that's. The direction from the council.
Okay, city manager. All right, so we will then call for a vote on this, vote on your portal.
Motion passes with a four fifths vote of the council with Councilmember Downey voting nay.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay. Now. Move forward to city manager and council member reports. Your city manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members have a few items. So I guess it was a couple of weeks ago, the Golden State rate case. That we formally participated in was approved by the Public Utilities Commission. The, the case that was approved was what we. Supported as part of this process, which was the consolidation of rates with Golden State's district in Sacramento area, so. It freezes the rates for Golden State's customers for three years, the, the period of this rate case, they have to do this every three years, so. Just wanted to kind of let the council know that that was finalized. That was what the council asked for was ultimately approved. That's effective February first of this year. Had a meeting with representatives from USDA, US Department of Agriculture. Last week related to some of their funding programs and how we might be able to take advantage of them. So we're expecting a couple of ideas for some infrastructure investment. Be probably coming back to the council to consider in the coming months. We did receive notification that. We received just a little over a million dollars, which is actually for the. That Gardens Housing Project on Old I-53. From the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program at the state. This is something that was applied quite a long time ago, but. That approval finally came through. Reminding everyone that we're, sorry, my list is kind of random here, so just stick with me. We did extend the recruitment for both Planning Commission vacancies as well as Measure V because. We basically had no applicants at the deadline, so at this point we are planning on. Considering that at the, the March 6 meeting. We did a social media push and various things and we have received some additional applications, but just reminding. Council members about that, if you have someone you think might be a good representative. The Boils Fire cleanup started again finally on Tuesday, so it's good to get that going again. It sounds like they're expecting a couple more weeks of cleanup time. Just a reminder that. The vast majority of the property owners signed a right of entry agreement. To allow access to the state to do that cleanup. We were not able to make contact and get rid of entries from everyone. I will be working with. CalRecycle and CalOES to do abatement warrants for those properties. They still intend to clean them up, but we have to go through the. Abatement warrant process, one or two, if we have co enforcement activity on a parcel. But hopefully in, in the next few weeks, that will be done. I got an email today from Lake County Vector Control. That they're going to be doing some aerial mosquito abatement around the county tomorrow. A lot of it's in the Rodman Slough area, but there is some aerial spraying that's expected in the Anderson Parish area, so. I don't know if there's anything to do about that other than if you hear an airplane hold your breath for a few hours.
Don't you think that's a little more premature to be doing that?
I, I don't have any type of scientific background to determine that, just passing along.
Not really mosquito season. They're not flying around yet.
Hopefully they have some justification for that, but anyway, passing that information along, so.
Did you have a question?
If you've seen some. If you've seen some activity around Phillips and 34th. Thirty second, over the last couple of days, there was a mercury spill. Someone had apparently a private, not exactly sure what happened, but there was a small amount of mercury that was spilled. Just off the roadway. We haven't had really a lot of communication. I didn't have any talk right before the meeting about this, but. The EPA is out there doing cleanup and. We do have the road closed in that area right now over tonight. That's what they were wanting. They don't want people, there's a very small. There's a very small amount on the pavement and then some on uh private property there. So anyway, watch out for that. Um keep you updated on developments there, but um EPA is doing the cleanup. Very small amount, I'm not sure what's taking three days, but anyway, um they're still working. Sonoma Clean Power is a community choice aggregation electricity provider in Sonoma County that also serves Mendocino County. Um they reached out to um the three jurisdictions and have some interest in expanding up into A County. And so basically, um there's an uh ability under state law for them to uh, you know, buy trade electricity like um directly to us, but they use PG&E's transmission lines. Um gives the, the idea is it gives the community a little bit more control over um things. They have a lot more programs, I think, that they're rolling out that may be of interest to the community than what PG&E does. And they looked at this a number of years back and decided that it wasn't feasible, but uh there's some things the state law changed and they're interested in looking at it again. So um the initial estimate is there would be, if we win this traction, there would be uh a savings for customers um in Clear Lake over what they pay for PG&E rates now. So I I sent them a letter of interest. Um that's the first step, um asking them to do a feasibility study. Um it is done at their cost and may take a month or two. And so if if they come back with a determination that they are interested in this area, um we'll schedule a presentation in front of the council for them to talk about their programs and how this would work. And then there's a whole process. Um if we move forward, they would expect to have everything approved essentially by January of next year and begin service through them in January of twenty twenty seven. Um I think there could be some potential advantages, and interestingly enough, they are looking at um developing their own energy generation in a number of ways, including solar and geothermal. So it'll be interesting to learn more about that. Um and then, well, it looks like you're angling to ask a question.
Is that similar to what Ukiah is doing?
Yeah, yeah, they they started in Sonoma County, um then uh they expanded into Mendocino County. I think they serve everything there except for Ukiah has their own utility. Um so they're not part of it, but um they serve the rest of Mendocino.
But they buy from, they buy from PG&E and then.
Well, they, I think they can buy other places too. It's not just from PG&E. They can actually buy electricity out of state. They get a better deal and so forth. Um but you know, they're in a position now, sounds like a pretty strong uh position financially where they're looking at actually generating their own power, doing battery storage, a number of things. Um last thing, uh I spent most of my day at the Lake County Courthouse today. We had a hearing on the requested injunction related to Highlands Water in consideration of whether um the city is a shareholder. At at that hearing, um the judge granted the city's request for an injunction. Um so you know, this, so this is still a temporary thing. There will be a um formal hearing of finality coming up. But the injunction is granted based on the likelihood of the city to prevail at that trial and he has ordered Highlands Water not to make any changes of any kind that would inhibit the city's shareholder status until after that. So um I don't have any um written uh don't have the written ruling or anything at that point yet, but we'll share that with the council once it's received. So without that, that's very important.
Did we have something from Boyd?
Well, I I mean, I I sent out a notice, we put in the newsletter, we did receive an appeal from the coil in the Burns Valley Sports Complex. Project, so you know, that starts the process. I mean, it's, you know, the same process we went through with the Eighteenth Avenue. Um that's been, I think, over a year since that was initially um filed. That is, we do have a hearing in San Francisco, the appellate court on Monday on that one. Um so I will let you know how that goes.
Okay. Thank you, City Manager Flora. Uh we shall move on. Let's start uh with council member Downey. Do you have anything to report? Okay. Council member Wilson, I know you went to a meeting.
I attended the Lake County Clean Water Program meeting today. Um they presented the four report, which is the municipal separate storm sewer system and they will have another meeting in Clear Lake on May fifteenth.
Try to make that one with you. Thank you. Uh council member Wilson, council member Hooton.
I don't have anything to report at this time.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Sloten, I know you have. I guess we got some money to better inside walk in between Safeway and then apartment complex on Safeway side. How do we get that?
Well, there's money available. Um no one else in the county applied for it, and so we scrambled and put together an application to make sure we got it, so.
Fairly significant amount.
It's all Director Labor, pretty much.
Thank you. We we talked to uh, we did talk about wildfire evacuation preparedness plans and stuff. I think we, the city has one forty avenues, if I remember right.
We have one for the entire city, so yeah, it would be nice if they would uh adopt. Well, at least talk to us about our existing plans and see if there's any updates needed.
They also started to talk about some zero admission uh charging stations in uh in the lower part of the county. The only one that's available right now, there are some at some private places, but the only Tesla charger is in Upper Lake, right at the roundabout there. And so they want to put one over here someplace. So um I gave them some suggestions of where, but we'll see. Uh the other thing that I did, I uh, I guess yesterday. Was it your yard? Yeah, 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 that seems like a good place. Well, we had a tour yesterday of people from Laugh who had a tour of the facilities of Connectai Water System, and uh I'm really impressed. I'm really impressed of the upgrades they were able to do to their pumping stations out of the lake and and the facilities up at their main tanks and the processing, but I was really impressed. That's it. Thank you, Vice Mayor Sloten. Those are obviously both the same things that that I attended and I think the only thing on the that we did talk about was that Altrans had had uh grant funding that will some point in the future get uh more lighting and um uh guardrails on Highway fifty three through Clear Lake. I I wouldn't expect that to happen in the next month or two, but at least they've uh, they're moving forward a little bit on it. I know you're you're pretty uh, I know you're not optimistic it's gonna happen in our lifetime, but but they are moving forward. So that was the only addition I had to the meeting at uh of APC. I guess on the LTA part of it, the ridership seems to be picked up a little bit this past month, uh with routes that were eliminated. They're doing a little little bit better financially. Lake Links also reported they, they uh their ridership on their pay your pal program has increased in the last couple of months fairly significantly. Um and then the other thing, uh there is an effort led by actually Supervisor Sabatier and myself and uh Fire Chief Sepeda to form a fire safe council with firewise communities in the footprint of the Lake County Fire Protection District. And to that end, we're gonna have a town hall meeting that'll be here in chambers on uh March thirteenth, I believe, starting at six o'clock. Uh and it'll be available to anybody that wants to come in, and I believe it's also gonna be on uh on Zoom on March thirteenth. So that uh might be something that we all, you all should uh to attend as we're, we're gonna need to be looking at all of the advantages that we can get to uh, obviously to impact our insurance rates somewhere somewhere down the road. So that's all I have. So I would uh ask, are there any future agenda items from council you'd like to see on? No? Okay. So then seeing none, we are going to adjourn at eight oh five. And we are.